I'd like to make an announcement before we start. We have... Item 8B is Discussion Regarding Rental Inspection Certification Program for Mayor Hill. And if you wish to speak on this subject, please be sure and sign in on the public comment sheet because when we get to the agenda item, it is just going to be discussion among the commissioners. There will be...we won't be having any public comment. We have not talked about this as a group yet at all, and we just want to take the time to go over some of the issues that were raised at the public meeting and at our last city council meeting. So if you wish to speak on it, please come up and sign in right now. Okay, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting in the Zion City Council the order. Clerk, please call it.
Commissioner McKinney?
Present.
Commissioner Taylor?
Present.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Pastor Dave?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we just thank you for your presence here tonight, Lord. We thank you for your love and for your mercy and for your grace. We thank you for your eye that is upon each and every person even in this room, Father God. Father, we thank you for the privilege to be here, Lord, in a time where it feels like we're trying to push you out of everything, God. I thank you for this community. I thank you for Zion. I thank you for this mayor, and I thank you for this team that he has around him, all around this room. I thank you for the labors that each one of these men and women put in and the hours, sometimes thankless, sometimes sleepless nights, waking up thinking about it, going to bed thinking about it. Lord, I thank you for those...for that energy and for the labor and for the work that they do to make this city to be successful. Father, we do look to you. We do acknowledge you. Your word says, "In all your ways, acknowledge me, and I will direct your paths." And so, Lord, we acknowledge you tonight. We acknowledge you in all of these things that we need. We acknowledge that we need you here. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom. We acknowledge that we need your grace. We acknowledge that we need your presence. We acknowledge that we need your hope. We acknowledge that we need your strength and power. And so, Father, thank you. We do acknowledge that we need you tonight and now direct our paths. Lord, I just want to thank you for Chief Dave LaBelle, who had open-heart surgery today, Lord, and that it went well. We pray that you would help him to recover. We pray for his family and everybody that is around him, Lord, for the peace, and we pray for healing and to bring our...this servant back to his position, Father. Lord, I thank you for our Marine Corps, Lord, 240 years old today. Lord, we thank you for the men and women that have served in the Marines and of all of our armed forces. Lord, what a blessed nation we are. We thank you for each one of them, for their families, the sacrifice and the service for the safety of our borders, Lord. We are so grateful to you. So, Father, thank you. Now bless this meeting tonight, Lord. Bless our mayor. Surround him with your strength and your courage. And, Lord, give him the integrity that he wants and longs for and has. And, Lord, we just thank you for the city council, Lord. Now bless this time. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda or agenda changes? Does anybody have any agenda changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Motion in a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizens' comments. First on the list is Tamela Bangs from Zion.
Good evening. My name is Tamela. I represent Woodstone Village, Horizon Village, A Safe Place One and A Safe Place Two apartments all here in Zion. Mr. Kotcher sends his regrets that he couldn't make it tonight. He doesn't want you to misinterpret his absence as a lack of concern, which I'm sure you all realize. He just wasn't able to make it. We're still very focused on this issue, and we hope that there can be a resolution for the larger apartment communities that's bearable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for your information, the item on the agenda tonight is for discussion only.
Right, no, we are right.
Second is Mr. Bremner.
Honorable sirs, gentle ladies, I am W.C. Bremner, 2525 Elam. I rise this evening to stand in front of you to call your attention to an article in today's Chicago Tribune regarding the Zion nuclear plant and whatever they're doing in which the mayor and Commissioner McDowell are cited and quoted. With your permission, sir, I'll approach and give this to you for your perusal and interest.
Yes, sir.
I do thank you all for your time and your courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Next is Jacqueline Holmes.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I was here commenting, I believe it was a couple months ago, regarding a concern for people running a stop sign. My address is 1901 Ezekiel. My folks have owned that home for over 30 years. The problem continues to happen, and I am following up tonight because I recall just during last month's meeting online, a resident thanking the city for installing a speed bump in her area. We had requested one in our area, and I understand it couldn't be done because of the plows would have a problem. So I'm here tonight to request again because, like I said, the problem has not curtailed to request again for consideration for a speed bump in our area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Item six is the consent agenda. Clerk, could you read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on October 20th, 2015 at 7:02 PM. Approval will not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on October 20th, 2015 at 8:28 PM. Bills vouchers 122024 to 122111 drawn on First Mary Bank totaled $489,871.61. And proclamation, the 240th birthday of the United States Marine Corps, November 10th, 2015.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there a discussion? I would like to read the proclamation. It says, "City of Zion proclamation. I, Albert W. Hill, Mayor of the City of Zion, Illinois, to hereby proclaim that on the 10th day of November, 2015, the City of Zion, County of Lake, State of Illinois, dishonor the United States Marine Corps and all those who have honorably served therein on this the 240th birthday of the Corps. Be it further proclaimed that an official copy of this proclamation will be forwarded to the Commandant of the Marine Corps Headquarters, Marine Corps, Washington, DC, dated the 3rd day of November, 2015." I'd like to present this to representatives of the Marine Corps, and I would like to just share with you that I was drafted in 1970 into the Army, and I was glad it was the Army because I don't think I could have done what you guys did. Thank you for all your service. I really do appreciate it. Although, there's nothing wrong with the Army. (Applause). Why don't all you gentlemen come up and get a picture? Please.
I like this. I wish they'd do more pictures.
(Inaudible)
We're good.
We're good.
Not that...that's polite, white light. Okay, there you go.
Right there, one first one, right there. Fantastic. One more, guys.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, commissioners, on behalf of the Lake County detachment of the Marine Corps League, we very graciously accept this, and on behalf of all the veteran Marines and active Marines that are here in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second on the consent agenda. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven, considering passing resolution as follows. Resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. Supplemental MFT resolution for 2015 patching program per Director Colangelo. Director Colangelo is not here today. The memorandum is attached as a supplemental resolution for improvement by municipality for the maintenance of streets and highways under the Illinois Highway Code. During the course of the patching program, we encounter additional pavement deficiencies that require repair. This allows the city to utilize an additional $7,960 of motor fuel tax funding for the project. Staff requests and recommends approval of the resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is Discussion Authorization and Approval. 8A is Discussion Regarding Request for Constellation Energy Regarding the City of Zion Electric Aggregation Program for Mayor Hill.
On September 15th, the city council approved sending a letter to Constellation Energy agreeing to their request to postpone the 30-day negotiation period regarding a price increase until a later date till all the data was available. We received a letter from Constellation, and they were supposed to have gotten their information on November the 2nd, and they're going to discuss it, and will later on provide the city with information about any potential price impacts. So this is simply a request to extend the negotiation window through December of 15.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 8B is Discussion Regarding Rental Inspection Certification Program for Mayor As many of you know, this is a project that we've been working on for quite some time, and we've had some public comment, both at the last city council meeting and at a public meeting that we held at Central Junior High. There were approximately 250 people that attended the meeting and gave us a great deal of input on what they thought of our rental inspection certification program. My...I'll summarize what I heard at the meeting and the concerns that I think were the ones that were the most...well, I think the most important ones for the people that were there. And I have five things that I've come away with. The number-one issue that we heard at the city council meeting was the large property owners such as Horizon Village and some of the other big units versus small, single-family rental units that are scattered throughout the city and the impact that the certification program will have on the large units. The other item that I heard at the public meeting was that the cost of the inspection, the $100 fee that was proposed to be charged, was too high of an inspection fee. There was concern that the...of exactly what was going to be inspected. There were concerns that it would go beyond life safety issues and get into, for lack of a better word that was used at night, they used nitpicking, and that was a concern. The other one that I came away with is that there was concern about the timeframe for making improvements. If someone were cited for a violation of her building code, I think the ordinance and the way it's set up right now, if we send out a letter, they have 30 days to respond, and we expect that the improvement will be made within 60 days. And there was some concern on that, especially if these were high-cost items that had to be taken care of. And then there was also the concern that we were...I'm not sure it was a concern. There was a request that if we are going to work and put an ordinance in place to upgrade rental units in town, that the people who owned the rental units wanted to ensure that the owner-occupied homes in town were also inspected and brought up to code and a higher...to a higher standard. I had a couple of items troubled me during the meeting. One of them was, I made a remark, and it surprised me. My remark was that, as I'm not a landlord, so I don't understand exactly what landlords have to deal with, but I said if...I was under the impression that people were trying to provide units that were as...like their home, that they were trying to provide units so that the same quality of their home that people could rent. And the response to that was unanimously kind of like, "Are you out of your mind?" And I was really, really surprised at that. I thought that the people were providing rental units that were like their homes, so...and then the other...I had another concern was that I...what I heard, and I understand this, but I'm hoping that the landlords understand it from our perspective, too, that everybody that spoke was looking at this from their own individual circumstances in the rental unit that they had or the three rental units or the 10 rental units that they had. And there were only a couple people that I heard at the meeting that were looking at this from the big picture of what we're trying to do Zion-wide. And they were...I just...I was a little bit taken aback on people were just concentrating on how this was going to affect them rather than how this was going to affect the entire city. And then the other thing that I was kind of pleased with, though, on the other hand, is that we sent out 1,200 letters, and there were 250 people at the meeting. And I guess I felt like I was preaching to the choir on this because I think most of the people who were at this meeting were the good landlords who keep their property up pretty well. I'm somewhat disturbed that there were 950 people who received a letter who didn't show up, and I don't know what their attitude is, and I would certainly like to hear what they had to say. With that, we did receive input from the Illinois Association of Realtors, and each of you...we just received this today, so each of you have this in front of you, and there are some issues that are in here that were raised at the meeting. And I guess I would just like to start discussion on...we're not...obviously, we're not taking action on this tonight. We have already adopted the ordinance, but it was with the understanding that if there were objections, we would consider those objections, and we would come back with amendments. And I would like to come back with amendments at the meeting two weeks from now and have a final ordinance on what we're going to do. So I open it up for discussion.
So this document that we received from our attorneys, is it addressing just the green sheet that we saw at that meeting that the IAR put out, or are there other questions in this document?
No. This question...or this document, and again, this is attorney-client privilege. We can talk about it, but this is between our attorneys and us.
Well, I mean, I just got it. I haven't read it yet.
Right. Right. There are some...no, there are things here that are...the representative from the Illinois Association of Realtors sent us a set of questions and their objections to the ordinance, and these are the responses to it. We can talk about these tonight.
All right. Beyond what was presented at the meeting, or...
Paul has said if we do, we're waiving our attorney-client privilege, so...
Well, I just didn't want to repeat myself because I have, you know, a list of what I heard at that meeting, which I'd just like to bring up to council.
Yeah, I think that's...and I would really like to do that because what I heard may not be what you heard or may not be what Commissioner McKinney heard either. I think that that's a great idea. That's what I want to do, in the public, too. That's what we're...
Well, I appreciate that meeting very much, and I think some came to it thinking that this ordinance was set in stone, the inspection criteria was set in stone, and my response to them has been, if that was the case, we wouldn't call a meeting to get public input. And so I think we should take their input seriously, and we are. And I just would like to kind of summarize what I picked up at that meeting, and I think there were some really good comments. One that I think we need to take into consideration is we have some residents here that rent out either...they live in one side of a duplex and rent out the other side of a duplex, or they live in the first floor of a multi-floor house, and they rent out the second floor. And so their question to me was, "Is my whole property going to be inspected? Are you going to come into my home and inspect that as well as the rental unit that I have?" I didn't have an answer for that question. I don't know if we have an answer tonight, but I'm just raising it as I think a legitimate question.
The ordinance does not exempt duplexes or owner-occupied duplexes. They have done it in other municipalities, so that's something we can look at.
Okay.
Well, if there's a rental upstairs, if somebody's renting out a room upstairs to their...a family member, is that exempt?
Well, the way the ordinance reads it, it has to be owner-occupied. If it's not owner-occupied, it's considered for let or for rent.
Okay, so if I'm living on the first floor and my daughter and her two kids are living upstairs on the second floor, does the second floor get inspected?
I would think family would not...would be exempt, but it doesn't address that in the ordinance.
Okay. We'll have to look at that.
Well, I think, you know, that...I don't know if we're going to...we won't decide it tonight, but I think I just want to bring it to the council's attention that was a question that was raised.
Well, I think that's a...I mean, I think that's a good question.
I do, too.
And I would really like to get a consensus if we can so that we can put it in ordinance form so that it's ready to go two weeks from now.
Well, okay, my opinion, then, is going to be that owner-occupied dwelling shouldn't be inspected, but the rental part of that should be. But that's my opinion on that issue, but...
Anybody else?
I agree.
I agree with that.
We have many conscientious landlords here, and I think that's why they came to the meeting, because they read the ordinance and they read the inspection criteria, and they were counting up the dollars it was going to cost them to make what they thought were going to be repairs. And they were looking at it in terms of, "Well, if there's a stain on my carpet, if there's a small crack in my wall, if my floor space doesn't meet the exact criteria, if there's...if my wood..."you know, these kinds of nitpicky types of things. And they're saying, "Am I going to have to replace my whole window because it doesn't slide up easily or doesn't slide..."you know, in a 110-year-old house or something along those lines." So that's what some people were raising as issues, and I guess I'd like to get a response to that if we could. What are we going to be looking at exactly? Are we going to look at stains on the carpet and small cracks in the wall, or are there bigger-picture issues?
Well, Rich will address some of this as will I, and that was one of the misperceptions about the program, is the nitpicking issue. We're talking about life, safety issues, and when we talk about that, we're talking about electrical, plumbing, water as well. We're not going in to look at people's carpets.
Yeah.
If there's an issue with windows not being raised, Rich will have to address this, it certainly would seem like it would be an issue if there was a fire and you couldn't get out your door.
Sure.
So...but the issues that we're talking about aren't the nitpicking type. We're talking about life, safety-only apartments that are clean and safe. That's what we're talking about. Rich, you can further address this, please.
Well, the list was based on the property maintenance code, so I could see where they would think there was nitpicking items on the list. We can revisit that list and maybe narrow it down to more of a life-safety-issue-type inspection. But if we call and obviously can see a violation, we're going to have to address it, but it's going to be a case-by-case basis.
I mean, I'll just give you another example because someone met with me last night, and they said the unit that they rent in the upper floor of their house, the living room area is 10 by 10, and the requirement in the ordinance is it has to be at least 120 square feet. So it just...his question was, "Do I have to enlarge my living room area to meet the requirements of this code?"
Well, we do similar inspections now for property maintenance, and obviously we get into an existing dwelling, and the square footage doesn't quite meet the code. Obviously, we've got to use common sense. No, they're not going to have to enlarge the property.
I mean, this is an older house, and that's how it was built.
And we have a lot of that in town, obviously.
Okay. I think that our conscientious landlords just need that kind of assurance from us that we're not going to be nitpicking on some of these issues and will understand the way houses were built back then, that there might be issues. I wonder if we ought to consider differentiating between multi-unit apartment complexes and basically single-family homes that have been converted to rental space, either it's been subdivided or the house itself. Because as I've gone through this rental inspection criteria, in some places, it says in parentheses, "Multi-unit," so that means it's focusing on multi-unit. In some places, it says apartment for apartments. So somebody looking through this and, you know, reading what the criteria is, it's actually a criteria for a multi-unit apartment complex, not for a house, like common space and hallways and those kinds of issues. And I wonder if it would be less confusing to our landlords if we had two sets of criteria, one for houses and then one for multi-unit apartments. So I'm just putting that out there, too, to consider. I also wonder if we ought to consider revising our fee structure. A point was brought up is, would there be any consideration for having some kind of incentive for landlords who keep up their property well? So if they pass inspection on year one, they actually have two years before the next inspection. And it's an incentive so that if they maintain their property well, they won't be inspected every year, but, you know, every other year or every third year or something along those lines. So I want to bring that to the council's attention.
We have... We have, we've talked about that, and I think that we'll have a decent proposal when we come up with it. If you have, I mean, given this sheet, it was placed on the dais tonight, and we had originally talked about $100 fee. Well, we have amortized some of the equipment that we will use. Instead of getting all trucks in the first year, we'll pay for them over a three, four, or five-year period. Same with computers, same with all the other equipment that we need. And it appears that the fee right now for it to break even and only pay for the program that we're doing has gone from $100 per unit to $66 per unit. Now, and that's, that's not, still not cheap, but just keep in mind that if for every person, and we have no idea how many of the rental units will not require an inspection the second year, the costs of running the program are going to go up each year if there's raises or cost of gas, or whatever happens. The cost of the program is going to fluctuate. So, if we have 30% of landlords, or 50% of landlords, or 70% of landlords that don't need an inspection that second year for an incentive, we're gonna be hard-pressed to have this program pay for itself. So, we just have to keep that in mind. And I'm not suggesting that we don't do that. I think that's a great idea. It's just that we need to be prepared. And Rich and I were talking today, now, there are going to, I'm without a doubt, and not for the good landlords, but to the landlords who really do not care, there are going to be some fines involved. So, that will produce revenue for the city, which I would think would help pay for this program also. How much they are, I don't know. There are also gonna be some additional costs involved, depending on how much we have to fight with people, and we will enforce the ordinance, but it's gonna require legal fees to be expended also. So, we have to just be sure that what we're doing is paying for itself, because we've said over and over and over that we can't, we don't want to add additional costs to the city, so.
Yeah.
But it has down to $66, which is, which is, we've done, we've made a fairly significant move on that.
Also, Commissioner McDowell, the issues that Jared talked about, you and I had discussed, had discussions about, and what I had done after our discussion is forwarded all of the information that you gave me.
Yeah.
In addition to the conversations I've had with some of the landlords and people in the area, realtors, and sent that to everyone in our department, so that we could look at these issues and come up with some resolutions with them.
Yeah. I appreciate that. And, you know, we just, we don't have an opportunity to sit down as a council and talk about this. We are under the Open Meetings Act, so we don't sit down together and talk about, you know, all these issues. So, that's really what we're doing right here, is we're having this exchange back and forth, because we don't normally do that. And that's why I'm bringing some of these issues up.
Right, I think that's great.
And they're valid, they're absolutely valid, and as Mayor Hill was talking about, the intent of that meeting was to hear what the landlords had to say, the realtors, conversations that we've had with people out on our own outside of the city council meetings. It turned into a little bit more than that, but those are conversations that we had to hear.
Yeah.
And so, what we're saying, and what Mayor Hill has said, we have, we are listening, and we are making some alterations to the ordinance, so that they are very clear.
And I think your point, your point, I mean, maybe it's a little embarrassing that we're standing up here questioning each other and asking these questions, but I think that's what local governments are supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be talking about these things in public, so that people understand why we're making the decisions that we're making. So, I say, let's talk about it, and we'll come up with a solution to all this.
One of the things that I heard from another landlord, who is a lifelong resident of Zion, they decided that they were gonna invest in Zion, and they bought 12 properties, 12 houses that they rent out. Well, things haven't gone as they expected with our economy and with our housing stock, and, you know, they're just barely getting by with these properties, and actually, they're conscientious people, and they know the repairs that they need to make. They don't need the inspection criteria to know what they have to do. They just have a cash flow problem, and, you know, they want to get to some of these repairs, but it's on a timetable. And so, their question to me is, what is the timetable? So, if the inspection takes place and something is noted that they know about, how much time are they gonna actually have to do the repair? Especially if it's a costly repair, that, you know, they're trying to operate 12 houses, you know, they might have a cash flow issue. So, that's a question. How much time do they actually have to make those repairs?
And I think the ordinance didn't, if I'm not mistaken, Rich, the ordinance calls for a 60-day turnaround time on repairs?
Yes, that's what's stated in the ordinance.
And I think what we had talked about, especially if it's a, I understand, if it's a big-ticket item, people just don't have that kind of money laying around.
Yeah.
However, if it's truly, truly a life-safety item, I mean, we don't, we don't want people living in places that are unsafe.
Yeah.
So, that's a, but we've also talked about extending that 60-day period out to either 120 or maybe 180 days, so they can, they can have time to get them done.
Yeah, Rich, well, we were talking a little bit about the life-safety issues, if that was presented pertaining to the question that Commissioner McDowell asked. Was there a, did we say that there was a 72-hour, or I don't recall what the timeframe was? If it was a life-safety issue that had to be repaired?
Well, that's if we post a unit, it gives them 72 hours to get it corrected. Majority of times, for lack, no utilities, gas, electric, water, that's typically why we post a house here in town.
Yeah, there are, there are units that don't have gas, electric, or water, and they're being rented out to people.
Yeah, that'd be a problem.
Those things have to be.
Yeah, that's an issue, because just recently, there was a case in Minneapolis where that happened, and the family decided to heat the home with an oven. The mother left three children in the house, and the house exploded, and the kids were, their lives were lost. So, while this program, we talk about the cost associated with it, I'm sure that anyone that owns a home, that's a landlord, landlord, wouldn't want to have that on their conscience, and we certainly wouldn't want to have that on our conscience as a city.
Your honor, if I may just add, we inspect the apartments and businesses, and we always use a 30-day, we've always had a 30-day inspection for any violation we find. The key is working with the landlords or working with the business owners. So, if we find something and they can't fix it in 30 days, they just tell me, hey, I tried, I can't fix it in 30 days, I'll extend it another 30, another 60, until it's fixed. And that's worked well. You know, it's not, when they don't fix it, then we push them, take them to court.
What type of violation are you talking about?
It could be any violation from not having a proper exiting, it could be as simple as housekeeping issues, sprinkler issues, fire alarm issues. I mean, you go into some apartment business, apartment buildings, they don't have fire doors between hazardous areas and common areas. You gotta have a fire door, you gotta have an extinguisher in a laundry room, hazardous area. They don't do it, you write them a violation if they don't fix it in 30 days, you let them know you got another 30 days to do it. You know, and if they don't fix it after a second time out there, then they get a fine. They don't fix it after the third time, the fine goes higher, and so on and so forth, until eventually, most people pay it. We've never had to take somebody to court or adjudication court to get our fines, but the landlord knows, once they start getting the letters, you know, it's how you work with them, I guess.
Right.
If you just send them a letter and say, you're done, they come to you and say, this is gonna cost me $500 to do this, I can't do it. I'll give you 60 days, how's that? And usually, you can get away with it.
And I think the building department does that now, and they work with landlords.
Oh, no question. Yeah, it depends on the violation, but yes.
Now, thanks for bringing that up, Chief, because I'm just wondering, is there a way that we could perhaps combine a fire inspection and this building inspection? I think, if I'm not mistaken, Pamela and certainly others brought up this issue, that they already have multiple inspections that they need to have in each of their units. We're not necessarily in control of what Lake County does, but, I mean, if we have in the city two different inspection processes, why can't we combine them? Can our building inspectors be trained to also be a fire inspector, Chief? Is that possible?
I'm sure it's possible. I mean, it's mostly a matter of adopting the proper codes, so that both fire and building are using the same codes that they're enforcing, and it's a matter of checklist. Some stuff you have to be a trained fire inspector, others a property maintenance inspector can do. You know, it's just a matter of working between the two departments, having a checklist, Rich and I have talked about that before, is just having a checklist and knowing what to look for. And if it's something that's outside their realm of knowledge, and then they call on us, and then we go in there and we assist them with the violation.
Could the firemen be trained to be building inspectors also?
I was, I just was thinking that. I mean, we've got.
You could, but they're just, I'll be honest, if it's a second job, yes. Doing their job and that job, no time.
Yeah, we may have union, you know, we can go both ways, whether the firemen are doing building, we may have union issues there, so, yeah, yeah.
At least we can.
At least we thought of it.
Yeah, if we have two inspection processes, I really gotta, yeah, combine them. And then the other thing, I'm wondering, could we, could we talk to the other inspectors, like from Lake County? I don't know how many, you said seven different inspectors?
Oh, the inspection section?
Six, yeah.
We get six right now.
Yeah.
That's not just here, you know, that's fire department, HUD, Ida, Home from the county, we have our own syndicators and our own industry come out, so, yeah, we get visited a lot.
This might be really reaching, but I wonder if we could say to Lake County, we have an inspection process, we'd be happy to include your criteria, we have our inspectors, we will save the taxpayers money by doing all these inspections, and instead of having so many different units of government coming into these units doing similar inspections.
I think that's a great idea. Perhaps we could give reverse to Lake County for, so that they don't have to send people out.
Yeah.
We would do their inspections for them, but I imagine there might be some legal issues if something happened in a rental unit, and Lake County were, didn't inspect it for fire inspection, and then they got sued, and we get sued, you know, all those things would be, we'd have to look into those.
Okay. I think if we differentiated between what is the inspection process for apartments and multi-unit, as opposed to single-family homes that have been converted into rental units, it would answer a lot of questions that are, that I have on this inspection process. And just to give you one example, because I don't want to take up all the time, but under electrical, point 19, intercom or buzzer system must be maintained and labeled. And my question is, well, what if a house doesn't have an intercom system? Does that mean they have to put an intercom system in a house? Or is this actually for an apartment complex?
I thought it was notated in there, but maybe that was overlooked. We tried to break it down, where it listed it was apartment buildings only.
Well, there's some in parentheses where it says multi-unit, or it says apartment, but this one, there's nothing that exists. And then, and just going down, common areas must have adequate light. So, that has to be for an apartment complex, but it doesn't say for apartments, it just, it's unclear.
Okay.
We could clean that up.
Yeah.
That's, should be fairly easy to handle.
Commissioner McDowell, too, I think the other thing, as we were looking at this program, too, was the amount of non-owner-occupied homes in the area.
Yeah.
That haven't been taken care of. And while we respect, I guess, as Mayor Hill was talking about, the people that showed up at the meeting to tell us how they felt.
Yeah.
Were probably the landlords that take care of their properties. And so, we've been really trying to spend a lot of focus on the non-owner-occupied homes, and we have plenty of examples of people that own homes here that rent them out, that they are substandard.
Well, and we've talked about things that are, and we're gonna learn a lot as this program goes along, and it's just something that one of the gentlemen at the meeting indicated he had, like, 22 or 25 single-family rental units throughout the city, and Rich and I were talking about, now, how are we gonna do that? Are we gonna, I mean, is this guy gonna have to go with this 22 different times throughout the year? Are we gonna do all 22 in two days with him? And it's those things that will work out with the individual landlords.
Yeah.
If this person says, let's get them all done today, we'll do that type of thing. But there's gonna be small things that we haven't thought about, and we'll correct them as we go along, and do the best that we can to make the landlords happy that are getting with the program. So, and I think you've raised, I think a lot of the points you've raised are in here.
It could be, I just haven't.
Right, yeah, you haven't had a chance to read it, I know.
Yeah. I think overall, there was somewhat of a reactionary response by some landlords at the meeting, but some of that had some of the strongest opinions about it actually sent me emails, understanding why we have the program. So, I don't think there's a question that we need this program. We have a, we have a housing issue in Zion, and everybody understands that. It's just they're thinking, like you said, how's it gonna affect?
Right.
My one or two houses that I have that I'm renting out, and my margin is pretty thin, and I don't know how I'm gonna do it. And I guess I just need to say this, too, that those that have approached me also tack onto this issue are high tax rate. So, they're looking at the taxes that I pay in Zion, and now, this is how they were speaking to me, I look at the tax I have to pay in Zion, and now I'm gonna be hit with these repair bills, I just don't know how I'm gonna do it. That was what was said. And they asked this question, I said, is this, they said, is this gonna lower my taxes in Zion? And I said, well, probably not, but it is a first step in improving the whole city. And it will eventually be a component in reducing the tax rate.
Right, I would, my response to that question, not immediately, but the idea is that as the quality of housing goes up in Zion, the value of the property's gonna go up, and then hopefully, the tax rate will go down.
Yeah.
This is not, I mean, this is not, it's not a great thing if the value of the property goes up and the tax rate goes up. You know, that's not what we're trying to do here. But I think that there's a feeling among a lot of people in town that our two primary issues are safety and housing. And I've made it my priorities to address those, too, and I know this is, this is hard on people, but what we're doing isn't working.
Yeah.
What we're doing right now is not working, and I don't want to say, you know, it's better to do something, even if it's wrong, because I don't really mean that, but we have to do something, because we're, I think we're on a tipping point.
Yeah.
And I can't, and I haven't heard a better idea on what we can do. And I, I had a interesting conversation after the meeting, that I think you were, you and Commissioner McKinney both witnessed parts of it, where a gentleman representing the realtors took me to task for the ordinance, and, you know, and why are you doing this, and what are you doing, and why are you? And my question to him is, where have you been? You know, have you driven up and down the streets of our community? Have you helped us in the past? And, and I said, I haven't seen anything that you've done, that, as a group, or, and now we're trying to do something to help ourselves, and all you do is tear us apart and clobber us with this. And I, at some point, will probably apologize to that person, but right now, I don't want to. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from on this, too, that we have, we need to do something. And I feel for the, I mean, my goodness, they have 546?
542.
542 apartments they manage?
And on the safe place, it's 582, just to bump it up.
Yeah, that's a lot of units to be managing, and the financial impact, no matter what we do, is gonna be significant on them, but we have to do something, we have to treat everybody the same. That was the other thing, is why don't you go after the lousy landlords? Well, we can't, it's hard to write an ordinance that says, we're going after lousy landlords. We have to go, we have to, we have to treat everybody equally and everybody the same, and you know that, I'm not, anyway.
I think one thing the council needs to consider, that as this ordinance is successful, and we see housing stock improving, we see people wanting to move to Zion, wanting to rent in Zion, and I hope that's the outcome of it. rent in Zion, and I hope that's the outcome of it, and property values go up, people are going to complain, that now my taxes are going to go up. But I think that our, our city council needs to be very careful when property values go up, that we keep our levy down, because that's going to be the, that's the denominator for determining the tax rate. So, if property values go up, the EAV goes up, we need to reduce our levy. And we do. We need to reduce our levy.
No, I agree, I agree with you 100%. I'm smiling, it's just that we have kept our levy pretty much level.
Yeah. This is a, this is a general comment to, well, I'm making the comment to our council. But it is a general comment in our city, that as property values go up, more funds are available to taxing bodies, we have to keep our levy down.
And under that assumption, you would also feel if the property values go up, there's the chance that as a business owner owning multiple units, that you could ask for a little bit more in rent as well? We have affordable housing here.
Yeah.
Very affordable housing. We have transportation here, which is why this has been attractive for people to move That's all I have.
Anything more? Anybody else? I think there are some, I just want to tell people, I think there are some programs coming down the pike that are hopefully going to, it's like, I think it's like, they say it's like turning an aircraft carrier. It's going to be slow, but we're going to be bringing some things that we think will be, bring improvements to the community in a slow and steady pace, and this is one of the first ones, and there are always coming, so please bear with us as we're trying to do this.
And also understand that we are, we are listening. We're not just, it's not just rhetoric that we want input, and sometimes it's, I guess the meeting is not so much what was said, but sometimes how it's said, and we had to kind of put our egos aside and listen to the legitimate concerns of our residents, and we are addressing them, no doubt about it.
Item number nine is departmental commentary announcements. I have two announcements that are not on the sheet. We have a budget workshop scheduled for next Monday, the 9th, and we need to change that. We have a couple of people that are, will be out of town, and they're critical to the budget meeting, so I'm wondering if we can move it. Can we go to the 16th? Can we move it to that? What days are good for you, Commissioner? I thought you said.
Wednesday, the 11th, I can do it.
It's a holiday, we can't have a meeting on a holiday. And this has to be, not only is it a budget workshop, but it has to be a special meeting. But we need to, what is, what is the issue?
An allocation for.
Community development block grant funding approval, and the deadline is the 16th, so we can't have it on the 16th either. So, is there any chance during the Thursday?
The 12th?
The 12th.
I can't do it on the 12th. I can do it on the 13th, which is a Friday. Or can I?
13th?
Friday, the 13th?
I didn't even thought of that.
Why not?
I'd. Well, if we have it in the daytime, on the 16th.
Does that make it any less unlucky?
No, I'm talking about if, the 16th, if we did it in the day.
More. I think the.
The 13th, I was just joking about the 13th. I'm not superstitious.
Yeah. Can you, you want to do it the 13th?
Yeah.
What time?
1:00.
1:00, we'll do it. And then, we have a special council meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We have a, the item on the agenda is the, what do you call it?
Whole harms.
Whole harmless agreement with the Midwest Regional Medical Center regarding a piece of property that they're using right now, and we need to do that before they can have an occupancy permit for their new lobby, which is Wednesday. So, we have, we need a special meeting tomorrow, and it's scheduled at 4:00, and it will be a two-minute meeting, I assume, unless anybody has a problem with it, so. The other announcements are November 5th, 7:00 PM, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. November 9th, 5:00 PM, Zion City Nest. The 13th at 1:00 PM is the Zion Council Budget Workshop, and it's also a special city council meeting. And then, we have November 17th, 6:30 is the Zion Township Board Meeting, and it's 7:00 on November 17th is the Zion City Council Meeting. And we have need for a closed session, is there a motion to go into closed session? A motion in a second, but please call it over.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye, and the closed session is for discussion of personnel.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an announcement, if you don't mind, we're through, it's regular business.
Go ahead.
But the world stood still 71 years ago today when Jim Taylor came into the world. It's his birthday.
Oh!
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you. So, who would like to lead us in song?
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Taylor, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.